I'd like to welcome everyone to the special city council meeting 2020-07 Tuesday, June 16. Consistent with the governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and banning gatherings of more than 10 people, this meeting will be conducted by remote participation to the greatest extent possible. The public may not physically attend this meeting, but every effort will be made to allow the public view and listen to the meeting in real time. Persons who wish to do so are invited to view the meeting. The numbers are on the posted agenda. First order of business, city clerk? Okay, first order of business is the consent agenda. Approval of minutes from the previous council and standing committee meetings. Fiscal 21 budget review meetings, BNF, May 20, 2020, May 27, 2020, June 2, 2020. Would anyone like to remove any of those meeting minutes?
I would.
Okay, Councilor Holgrum?
I just wanted to make an amendment that I was present at the meeting on 5/20. I don't remember when I left, but I was there for at least a couple hours and my name is not on that list.
Okay, anyone else want to remove one of the matters on the consent agenda? Okay, I would like to, um, to, um, remove May 27, 2020 and add that I wasn't intended, I was in attendance for that meeting. Any further matters to take off the consent agenda? Okay, so is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second. Okay, roll call. Joanne, would you lead the roll call? It starts with Councilor O'Hara. Okay, I don't know if Joanne is hearing us, so I will go through the, um, Councilor O'Hara.
Yes.
Councilor Cox.
Yes.
Councilor Memhard.
Yes.
Councilor Pat.
Okay.
Yes.
Councilor Holgrum.
Yes.
Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Councilor Nolan.
Yes.
Councilor Gilman, yes. Did I miss anybody?
Councilor LeBlanc.
Okay.
So. If he's absent, you just.
Okay, so, um, the motion passes, um, seven, eight votes in favor, um, one.
I can't see you.
Absent, Councilor.
Oh, here we go, wait a minute, there you are, okay. Excuse me, counselor, um, I have Steve LeBlanc, um, he's coming in, he had trouble connecting and he's being promoted to a panelist now.
Great, and he's just in time for, to lead the scheduled public hearing, so.
Okay, so I'm gonna make you co-host right now. Okay.
All right. Everybody hear me?
Yep, yes.
Okay, sorry about that, I'm trying to get in on the Zoom meeting and I had the hardest time, so, um, I heard a little bit of it, so we just accepted the consent agenda? Okay. Do you, do you wanna keep going, Val, or you want me to take over? I can take over if you want.
Yeah, we're just, we're at the public hearing, so it's a perfect transition.
Perfect, thank you, Val, I appreciate it. Madam Clerk, can I have the next order of business, please?
It's the public hearing to the 2020-018 for the public hearing on the FY21 proposed budget.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, have we announced counselors in attendance yet?
No, we have not.
All right, in attendance, we have Councilor McCarthy, Councilor Cox, Councilor Gilman, Councilor Pat, Councilor Memhard, Councilor Holgrun, Councilor O'Hara, and Councilor Nolan, and Councilor LeBlanc, we have everybody in attendance this evening, thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, so I'm gonna open the public hearing and ask if there is anybody that would like to speak in favor of budget. We have our, um, Assistant Chief Administrative Officer, um, sorry, CAO. Vanessa, would you like to say something, please?
Yep, thank you, counselors, for the record, Vanessa Krasik, Mayor's Office. On behalf of Mayor Romeo Taken, I'm here to support and recommend the adoption of the FY21 proposed budget for the City of Gloucester. This budget reflects a responsible spending plan for our community, a modest 3% increase from the FY20 budget that continues to provide critical services to our residents by investing in education, municipal infrastructure and public works, and public safety. The FY21 budget is balanced and meets all of the city's contractual and other obligations, and is built on conservative revenue projections. As you know, the budget before you comes at a time of economic disruption and uncertainty brought on by the coronavirus pandemic. Additionally, the state has not yet released the 2021 budget proposal, so Gloucester doesn't yet know for sure how much local aid the state will provide. Many communities have not yet presented FY21 budget proposal for consideration. Gloucester has, and in many ways, that puts us at a, at an advantage over some of our neighbors. We have a strong track record of responsible fiscal management that has resulted in the growth of significant reserves, which will allow us to effectively manage the city through this economic emergency. Gloucester has seen consistent revenue growth from a variety of sources over the past several years. Our strong financial foundation will allow us to weather this storm. We will continue to spend wisely to maintain resources and fund core operations to meet the needs of this community and to ensure the effective delivery of services. As discussed in our budget meetings, if necessary, we will come before you to make mid-year adjustments. I'd like to take a minute to thank the BNF Standing Committee for their thoughtful review, consideration, and discussion during budget review meetings. And also, I'd like to thank John Dunn for his work on preparing this proposal, and also for the work that lies ahead in managing it in FY21. Thank you.
Thank you, Vanessa, is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor of the budget? Dunn?
Thank you, counselors. It was a difficult, as it always is, budget year, but we, we got through it, the budget has been presented. It is balanced, as Vanessa mentioned. Budget increases from the 2020 accepted budget of 114.3 million to 117.9 million in a general fund, and that's an increase of 3.08%. I'd like to, if, if possible, just touch on a couple of quick things regarding the current year, the 2020 budget. Yes. As you look at the current information, we expect to be over budget on the revenue side and under budget on the expenditure side. On revenue side, we have been over the past five years conservative in our projections, and that has resulted in inconsistent positive variances to budget. On the expenditure side, we benefited from this year a very mild winter. Much to, much to my surprise, and, and happiness, that's kind of resulted in the fact that not only do we have, we don't have to backfill any snow and ice accounts, but we actually have a surplus in the snow and ice department and DPW. A happy place to be in. In addition, we currently have up to $500,000 in COVID-19 related costs that have been charged or encumbered within the 2020 budget. We have gotten guidance from the state that has now allowed us to establish two separate funds for COVID-related activity, one a FEMA-based fund and one a CARES Act-based fund. And we should be able to move those expenditures that are currently in the general fund and the school fund out of those and move those over to the separate fund, so the impact on the, on the general fund will be negligible. So regarding the 2021 budget, it's the revenue side that gives us the most concern. About 80% of our revenues are derived from property tax and excise tax activities through the assessor and collector office. While we expect that there could be some cash flow lag in those, we do expect that those revenues are ultimately collectible, so they shouldn't have an impact on the budget. Our biggest concern, no surprise, is state aid. This budget is built on the governor's proposal, which was originally issued in February. And we usually look at that as the most conservative of the proposals, it gets amended by the House and Senate, and then it usually increases as the debate goes on, that's not going to happen this year. We don't know when we are going to get a final state budget, it's certainly not gonna happen before June 30. There will be a 112 state budget for July, maybe even another one for August. So we're just gonna have to wait and see, the guesses as to what the impact might be have been all over the place, so we're not even gonna try and account for that until we know for sure what's going on. There's a number of departmental revenue lines that we are also concerned about, and those are lines that are affected by what is going on with the COVID-19 activities. Those include beach parking, beach stickers, hotel motel and meals excises, and, and a couple of other ones. So, in some cases, we have actually reduced our budget from historical levels, but that probably will not be enough. So in the end, we're going to have to address both potential shortfalls in the revenue lines for general departmental, as well as whatever decision is made on state aid. We do expect that things will be much clearer, but probably not until September, so we're just gonna have to kind of wait. You know, most of the impact in the departmental things that we, we see that might happen will probably happen over the summer. On the expenditure side, we have budgeted for level services. Having said that, we have a number of vacancies in both city and school side of the budget. We have, we have both agreed that we will delay for as long as we can, filling those vacant positions, except if there's a particular need to move forward in light manner. We also delay the expenditure of amounts from ordinary maintenance accounts, unless such expenditures are absolutely necessary for us to do our daily tasks. A couple of general comments regarding the expenditure side of the budget, and these comments can be found in the budget book. But you'll see dotted throughout the budget, as we explained to BNF, that total personnel expenditures that are maybe tied to the GMAA contract have been increased because we hope to have at least an agreement by June 30, which would allow us to encumber the necessary funds for the retro for fiscal 2020. In the Treasurers Department, you'll see a little bit of a change, we moved a couple of things around, we decreased some items based on historic expenditures, and we also moved a salary related to parking-related activities to the, the parking department within the police structure. Current pandemic has reminded us of how integral, you know, management information systems department is, and we are, we continue to try and fund that with both software and hardware to make sure that we are up to stuff and able to do things like these meetings. Increases in total police budget are attributable to the full annual funding of the Assistant Chief Fire Department budget is, has a small modest increase due to capital needs. I will make a comment that within the fire department, their contract, their labor contract expired on June 30 of 2019, so there are no increases in that, we will have to face that at some point in the future. We have a fairly large increase that we see in the Council on Aging budget that has been funded in large part by the first year of our agreement with the town of Essex on the settlement of, of the sewer issue. So that should be, that was kind of nice timing that we recognized that we needed to add some additional funding to Council on Aging, and at the same time, we recognize the first of 20 years worth of, of revenue coming in from the town of Essex. Total DPW budget increased by about 450,000 bucks. A lot of that is attributable to the annual increase in the curbside pickup of trash and recycling. There are also a number of positions that have been funded within facilities for custodians, but those positions are not yet filled, and as I mentioned earlier, we are not gonna fill them until things become clear. Debt service is up by a very modest amount. What else is here that is? The biggest increase in the general fund budget is due to our pension assessment. We are on a very aggressive retirement of the pension liability, and that is increasing by 7% a year, so that really means to us an increase that is mostly felt within the general fund, but also felt across water and sewer. But that increase each year accounts to 650 or 700,000 dollars. On the single line appropriation for the Gloucester Public Schools increased by 1.25 million to 44,388,897. And as we all know, the decision on the school budget is really a one-line item for the council to make, and then the school committee makes their decisions on how to distribute those funds across the various program expenditure lines in the school side. Water and sewer, on we have an increase proposed in the Water Enterprise Fund to change the rate to $8.98 per thousand square foot of usage. That is a 50 cent increase over the current rate. Likewise, we have an increase in the Sewer Enterprise Fund on usage at $15.31 per thousand gallons of consumption as compared to the current rate of 1483. Again, these, these rates are a little, the increases are a little bit larger than in the past two or three years, but certainly compare favorably to what had been, what I had seen as some projections from seven, eight, and nine years ago. So, thank you very much, we appreciate all the work that, that you folks do, particularly appreciate the work of BNF to go through all the departmental budgets. And we ask for your positive vote in supporting this 2021 budget, thank you very much.
Thank you, John, is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor of tonight's budget? All right, seeing none. Madam Mayor?
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you, we're, we're in favor of the budget.
Steve?
Yes, I can hear you. Yep. You hear me?
I don't know what's going on.
We can hear you. Anyway, we'll move on.
Can you hear me, Steve?
Yes, we can hear you, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can now, I'm sorry, I have like three devices going, we have an executive session over there at school committee. I, first of all, I wanted to thank my team, John Dunn, Vanessa, and the Budget and Finance Committee, it's not easy. Right now, this is what we're hoping for, and like I said, you know what, we, all of us, all of us, we really don't know what's gonna happen down the pipeline as far as the budget goes with the, you know, state tax, revenue, beaches, et cetera, but also with the Chapter 90, with the federal state reimbursement, what we're gonna do. Also, what the, they're gonna do access to the state, right now, the state hasn't completed their budget yet, and they're going month to month, we just got our update today saying, right now, we're going on this kind of a budget, and we're gonna divide it by 12, but we're not sure exactly what's gonna happen, that's the state's budget, because they don't know. So, um, thank you all, it's, it's not gonna be easy, and right now, this is the easy part, it's, uh, what's down the pipeline. I'm working closely with all of you, which is great, I wanna thank you, but I also am very grateful, like I said, for Kenny also, and for Budget and Finance, and John Dunn and Vanessa, because it's been a long, it seems like it's easy, because they breeze through everything, but let me tell you something, every day, five or six Zooms to figure out what's gonna go, can we do it, can we not do it, and what's gonna happen, and a lot of my managers I wanna thank, because on the city side, we really have cut, we really have been, you know, postponing, we really haven't done all the high, we really haven't done a lot of things that needed to be done, so I wanna thank them too. It hasn't been easy, so, and City Council, thank you all. Let's just hope that, you know what, things change around, and you know what, we have actually extra, and then maybe we can have those dreams again that we did last year, that were the hopes that we're gonna be building things, so, let's hope, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor of this budget? All right, seeing none, is there anybody that would like to speak in opposition tonight of this budget? As you were told earlier, you can spread, you can press star nine if you're calling in, and there was a raise hand button if you're watching in, tuning in on a device or a laptop or is there anybody that like to speak in opposition? Going once. We have one person. Emily, Emily, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, could we have your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, um, my name is Emily Rachee Stavran, and I live up in Lanesville High Vow, um, in, I have five Norseman Ave.
Thank you, go ahead, yeah, we'll have three minutes, so this is three minutes, and I'll give you, I'll start the timer, go ahead, when you're ready.
Okay, I guess this is my first budget meeting, and I hope I'm doing it right, I have more questions than anything, can those, is this, can this be a Q and A?
It's typically not a Q and A, you can ask some questions, and we're gonna have the meeting tomorrow night, so we'll try to answer some of your questions tomorrow evening, if you ask them today.
Okay, cool.
Okay.
That'd be amazing, okay. The total GPD budget?
Yes.
What is it?
Councilor Cox.
It's not, it's multiple departments, it's not something I can pull together like that.
Okay.
If you want it, after you're done verbalizing your questions, if you wanna email me them, that would certainly be a lot easier for me to respond.
Awesome, okay, great, I just, yeah, it took me like four days to add up all of the, all the different line items for the police, you know, for all those pages, and I wanted to make sure that my math, I'm too dumb to be adding up all these numbers, I would love it if a professional could do it, okay, great, awesome. Okay, so, I really actually only have, I only have questions, so then, should I then come back tomorrow for email, Melissa, and then come back tomorrow to follow up and say a few more things?
I would encourage you to go ahead with your questions.
Okay, cool.
We might be able to have some answers, we've got all the city departments here.
Perfect.
But I, I would go ahead and encourage you to proceed.
Okay, what is longevity? It's, one of the examples is in line item 514006, and it's increasing by 82.1%. What is that, these are all related to the GPD budget, by the way.
Okay, longevity is a contractual obligation. It's based on how long you've been with the city, and it's kind of, I guess, a bonus or reward for being part of the team for that long, if anybody else, John, anybody else wants to chime in on that one?
Yeah, I'd be, John Dunn here, excuse me, let me flip up my, so yes, longevity is exactly that. It's a fixed amount that is negotiated within each of the bargaining unit contracts, and it is, it is tied to the number of years of service that have been delivered.
Okay, why is it going up 82%?
I think she's looking at, John, I think she's looking at just the admin part of that, where they added the Assistant Chief.
Ah, okay, so do you have a, I don't wanna go back and forth with answer, you know, question and answers, but in a, in a small department, if somebody moves in, as has happened in police administration, then that person's longevity moves from their former department to the new department, and that could certainly drive that percentage.
Okay, cool, awesome.
Can I go back to your original question?
Absolutely.
Okay, so the total police budget across all police departments for fiscal 21 is 7,270.
Okay, cool, that is not the number I got, so I'm happy that you, I got 11 million, so I'm glad, so, can you repeat that number one more time?
7,270.
Okay.
And that, that is actually summarized in, in, in the budget message.
Okay, I must have missed that. Okay, cool, um, next question, um, the, the admin staff salary, again, for the police department is increasing by 26.6%, is that, it breaks down the salaries for all five staff members, but it doesn't, you know, say whatever, like, if there's a raise across the board, I'm assuming that's only, or the 26.6% is due to the new, now that we actually have an Assistant Chief, now there's a new salary, or are other staff members also getting a raise?
Want me to take that too?
Yeah, if you want.
Yeah, so, so what happened there is that the Assistant Chief was only budgeted for six months in 2020, and is budgeted for 12 months in 2021.
Okay, so, um, the other, the four other staff members aren't getting a raise, it's just the Assistant Chief salary that's causing the increase?
The other staff members may be getting a raise, I'd, I'd have to look at each individual one.
Okay.
That's, that's the big difference.
Okay, cool.
Emily, hold on, before you, how many more questions do you have?
I have three.
Okay, three more?
Yes.
Okay, 'cause typically, we don't have a Q and A during the public hearing, people just get up and speak in favor and opposition. But I, I've stopped the time when other people are answering your questions, and you're about, you're right about there, so I'm gonna let you proceed. So, we don't have any, but we, I'm gonna without objection, is, is everybody okay with letting her go?
Yes.
Yeah, awesome, fantastic, thank you so much, okay, so, last, last question. So, the breakdown of the sergeants, so there's seven sergeants, but I think one of them is specifically by six, they're grouped one way, and then one's grouped on a different page, and so the sergeants are paid anywhere between 89,500 to 191,072. I was wondering, and this is obviously a very specific question, I was wondering specifically, how much does Sergeant Sean Connors make?
I don't know if we have his specific.
No, we don't.
We can't, I don't, I don't think we're gonna disclose that anyway, that's kind of like a
Well, technically, Steve, it is public information.
Information, but I don't know, I don't know if we have that.
Yeah, I would suggest that you file the Freedom of Information request for that, it's not something that we typically discuss personal matters like that in a public hearing. You can certainly request the information if you file the request, but we don't review the budget by person, we, we review the budget by position.
Okay, cool, I just wanted to know how much of my tax dollars are being used to pay the salary of a sex trafficker, thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there anybody else that would like to speak in opposition?
Um, Counselor?
Yes.
I know that Susan Bell, Ralph Pizzataro, and Patty Rosenblatt all planned on speaking, and they're down as attendees. Can we just remind them one more time about the rules, if you will, to let them know how to get on?
Okay, I, I just did before we started the, the, in favor and against, but if you're if you're calling in, you press star nine, and if you are watching on a device or a laptop, you can, there's a raise hand button, so if anybody would like to speak in opposition, feel free. All right, I'm seeing none. Are there any, Madam Clerk, are there any communications?
There was one communication that was received, 433, from a Richard Percy regarding a question on the water, the sewer rate. And Counselor Cox did respond to him, and that response was shared with all the counselors.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any counselor questions?
Steve, did you want me to read the question and read the answer into the record, or it's short?
Yeah, sure. That would make sense.
So he, his question was specifically, please explain the 6% plus increase in the sewer budget. That was his specific question. My response is the water rate increase, 5.8 in the sewer increase is 3.22%. The increase is tied to our debt service, meaning that it's equal to the amount that we invest in our services. Specifically, there was an increase to the contract to manage the wastewater treatment plants. And we do invest in our city as needed to provide services to the residents. There was no increase in staffing for the FY21 budget. And that I just encouraged him to join the meeting, and I hope that I answered his question. So it was a little bit more than that because I think he was tying water and sewer together, getting the 6%.
Thank you, Counselor. At least that was read into the record for tonight's public hearing. So thank you. Are there any other counselor questions? Counselor Pat?
Not a question. I would just like to make a comment. I'd like to thank Counselor Cox and her committee for all their work. Thank John Dunn and Kenny Costa and obviously Jim Distino and Vanessa for their work in putting this all together and doing things so clearly. We'd just like to add and remind everyone that the entire city's infrastructure does need to be maintained. And we always need to keep that in mind. We, sometimes we push things down the road, et cetera. But I want to, I would like to be able to have a support maintaining our infrastructure that we have as we move forward. And again, thank everyone for their work.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Pat, I'd like to echo that also. You know, we have our superintendent, Richard Sapphire. We have our DPW Director, Mike Hale. We have our Fire Chief, Eric Smith, our Police Chief, Ed Conley. We have our Community Development Director, Jill Cahill. We have our Chief Assessor, Nancy Pappas. They're all listening this evening. You guys did a great job in trying to get this budget together. I know it's tough every year. And, you know, I normally don't wear a hat during my meetings, but I'm just going to show our support. And everybody see, so my support for our police department, I think you guys are doing a great job. And I, I support you guys 100%. So any more counselor questions?
It looks like Ed.
Yeah, Counselor Holmgren, hold on one second, Chief.
I just wanted to echo what you said, Council President, as well as Counselor Pat. This is an incredibly challenging time for everyone, and it speaks to everybody's talents who's present at this meeting and also Mr. Distino and Mayor Taken. Thank you for rising to this challenge again, and I, I personally really appreciate it. And I know we all do.
Thank you, Counselor. Chief Conley, would you like to say something?
I would. Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate you taking me at this time, perhaps even out of order. I just feel, I feel morally obligated to respond to the very public comment that was made. And though I fully respect any citizen's right to investigate and ask good hard questions of of all public services, as I would want to myself. There was, there was a accusation made by, against one of my officers. And I've been a police chief here for a little over a year. And I, as you know, came from a very strong internal affairs background. And I can tell you here publicly that there is zero evidence or any credibility to that accusation that was made. And I just want to be on the record for it. And what, what the detective sergeant decides to do with that is going to be his decision.
Thank you, Chief. We appreciate the clarity. Thank you. Counselor Cox.
Just to wrap up the public hearing on this, I just want to say that without the previous years of putting money away and creating the stabilization accounts through the administration and through the cooperation of the city council, we would, we would be in a much different position, as Vanessa said earlier. So years of planning went into providing for the city and its residents. And unfortunately, we're seeing a payoff. You know, I want to say fortunately, but at the same time, under the circumstances, I have to say unfortunately, we're watching it pay off. You know, this budget, as with ones in the past, we've been able to squeeze an extra $2,000 or $5,000 out. I wasn't even prepared to try to play that with this year's budget, knowing that, you know, in six to eight months is when we're going to be really feeling the impact of what is happening now with our revenues. So again, just a huge shout out to the administration for their proper planning. And again, the cooperation of the city council to set those up in, you know, three or four years ago. It's really been a benefit. So thank you to everybody on that hard lifting. You know, who knew four years ago that we would be in this situation? So thank you to past counselors that saw that need and, and the current administration for following through with it.
Thank you. Four years, four months ago, who knew that we would be in this?
Yeah.
Counselor Gilman.
Thank you, Counselor. I just wanted to, to give a special shout out to BNF, President Cox, Vice Chair Memhard, and Member Counselor John McCarthy had an opportunity to sit in and listen to the three review meetings. And they were thorough, well organized, great questions. Shout out to all the department managers in leadership with the city administration because everyone was well-prepared. And I thought we, we definitely had an opportunity to vet and understand the budget. And I think that that's an incredible advantage. The Zoom format really worked well for this. We were even ahead of schedule at times. And John Dunn, Mayor, everyone that's on this call, and also our City Clerk, Joey Ancenos, and Assistant City Clerk, Grace Poirier. Well done. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor. Is there anybody else before we close the public hearing? All right, so I'm going to close the public hearing. And I guess we're going to have a motion, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm still moved.
I'm moved.
Second.
Seconded. Counselor O'Hara.
Yes.
Counselor Pat?
Yes.
Counselor Cox?
Yes.
Counselor Gilman?
Yes.
Counselor Holmgren?
Yes.
Counselor Blank, yes. Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor Memhard?
Yes, and we'll see you tomorrow night.
Yes, sir. Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. We'll see you tomorrow evening. Thank you.
Have a great night.
Thank you, Counselor.
Good night, everybody.